It's that bad, I'll let you borrow my jacket, but I got long sleeves on.
All right, morning everyone. We'll get started with August 2nd board meeting. As usual, we start with the case and I'll put Mr. Slade on the spot back in advance. We're gonna get it started.
That's great. Lord, thank you for another day that you've given to us and thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you bestowed on us and how you're so gracious toward us. Lord, thank you that we can come and we can participate in our county's government. Thank you, Lord, that you've given these men special skills. I pray for them to have the wisdom and the discernment that they need. I pray also, Lord, for those that are protecting us today, that you would keep them safe and bring them home safely with their families in Christ's name.
All right, we'll go ahead and call to order planning commission meeting. Mr. Renee, you want to get the ball rolling here? All right, I'll take, let's try to, if I do my job first. Consideration of approval is due 28th minutes.
So move.
Leaving Mr. Morrison second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carries. Old business. Any old business?
Uh, there is none.
No old business, moving on to new business. Number A, Mr. Edwards.
All right, the first item is a conditional use permit for Warren Zachary Edwards at 240 Poplar Street. This property is located on the north side of Poplar. He's seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2018 16 by 8 manufactured home on this property. It would be a second dwelling. This is, uh, the property is owned by his grandmother and she has an existing home on the property. That's an aerial photo. It's a two acre parcel. It's zoned RMX. Manufactured homes are allowed in the RMX zone, but with, uh, with one dwelling per parcel. Um, this is the location of the new home here. This is a view of where the home will be placed on the property. There's a, uh, existing power pole there. And this is, uh, the driveway actually splits that two acre parcel. Uh, this is the grandmother's home over here and that new home will be going in here in front of this building. That's a view of the grandmother's home. And then these are just surrounding properties.
I make a motion for something here.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carries. B, please.
All right, it's a conditional use permit for Amy Smith at 2844 Highway 43 South. Uh, this property is located on the west side of Highway 43. Ms. Smith is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2018 28 by 56 manufactured home on this property. It will be a second dwelling also and it's for her elderly mother. That's an aerial view of the property. Ms. Smith's home, um, is here. This is her site plan. Uh, she's showing where the manufactured home will be placed. This is a view of that property. It'll show where the, this is where the home will be going. It's another view of that property. The, she owns a 10.86 acre parcel and it's zoned A2. This is Ms. Smith's home. And this is the surrounding property.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like aye. Motion carries. Uh, site plan.
All right, uh, we have one site plan for Kevin Myers. It's for a Farm Bureau office building on Old Fannin Road. Property is located on the west side of Old Fannin. It is a, um, one acre parcel that's zoned C2. That's an aerial view of that property. There was an old home on the, uh, property that's been demolished. This is a site plan. He's proposing to construct a 2,240 square foot office building. Uh, one of the, uh, it'll have two office spaces. One will be for the Farm Bureau and one will be a lease space. Um, he's showing the building going here. Uh, the driveway coming in and the parking will all be, um, hard surface concrete. Uh, Buster's office has reviewed the drainage plan and all of that was good. These are elevations of the building. Uh, he's built this building in, uh, hardwood and it's gonna mimic this building other than it will not have those blue shutters.
Is that over by Southern Rock?
That's where the, it'd be built. It joins Barnett. That's right. We got some pictures of that. This is the site.
I just make sure we don't flood people behind them.
And these are surrounding properties.
You want to make that a contingent sound? He's already said that it's on site plan. I mean, water retention area.
It was just the neighborhood right behind him. It's kind of a low line area right there. So. It's like right next to it. It very well could.
No, that was, that was not Edmonds property. That, I, I can give you the history of that was not Edmonds property.
It was right next door to it.
Yeah, it is next door.
Have there been complaints about drainage?
Yes.
From that, I, I don't want to accuse that particular piece of property as being the fault.
It wouldn't be, I wouldn't think. I don't have it as a house on it, you know, so, uh, at the time. I, it's gonna put more out there since you put in concrete and a, you know, a bigger, bigger building. I mean, we can approve the, we can approve the architectural side of it today, I guess, Mr. Slade.
I just want to make sure that we, uh, make sure they have all their drainage under control.
They're detaining water in the, can you go back to the picture of the site plan?
That's.
They're detaining water to the south there of the building, uh, to the southeast corner, right in that area, if I recall correctly. And I think most of the water's draining through, there's, in the southwest corner, there's a culvert, I believe. Most of their water's gonna go out that way. But some would go off and back at the property, I think, that just can't go in that way. They're not sending all of that water.
Okay. All right. Good deal. I make most approve.
Most approve. Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carries. Uh, next meeting will be on Thursday, August the 30th, 9:00 a.m. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You know, I have one question about our zoning. I had a call from Alderman Pearl. That CMVDD has worked with them and they are rezoning some apartments and they were told that we made some changes to our zoning on apartments or maybe the way we have them labeled back, we did our comprehensive plan. I didn't recall.
Yeah, we, um, Renee, help me. My recollection, Jay, is that we, uh, we went to a maximum number of units per something.
I don't remember.
It's eight.
What do we call, what is our label?
Per acre.
Eight total. Per acre when that is?
I thought we just didn't do them.
I don't remember.
No, you can't, you gotta be able to do it. You can't just arbitrarily.
Not.
You can make it. I'm talking about the existing places that already have.
What do we call, uh?
When they get ready to build on that vacant apartment land, they've got to. I think Brandon has something like eight per acre.
What was it? And then it's eight. And I think we may have, we mentioned over the range, set on accident. And that may be what they're referencing, Jay. That's the total of what it is.
I don't, I don't think so. I think they're going from calling it like a C3 to an actual delineation of an apartment itself like a.
We have a high density.
Like a R3 or something like that.
Yeah, I think.
R4.
Or an R4.
R3 would be down house.
What do we call ours?
R4.
We, our, we reference apartments as R4?
High density.
Did we change that?
No.
That should have been a carryover from original.
Okay. All right. I didn't, okay.
I don't remember us making any changes to that. Now, we did, uh, change some wording on, was it the condominiums or something? Uh, there was something there. We did change the.
The stone bridge change.
Yeah. We did do something on that, the definition or, or something.
Definitional change. And that may be what they're talking about.
But it wasn't apartments per se.
Okay. So for multi-family, we do R4.
High density R4.
All right. Very good.
You good?
Yep.
I make a, here a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Motion carries. Uh, we'll adjourn that meeting and start the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, any public comment, Ms. Gaines? Do you have a public comment?
I do. That's unusual, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, turn that up. No, I would just like to introduce my granddaughter, Paige Oster. She goes to Pisgah High School. She's a senior this year and she's doing some shadowing today. She was here the other day. She has to shadow somebody for one of her senior projects. And so she cannot do me because I am her grandmother. So she's been shadowing Wanda and Michelle and she's sitting in today to see how the business is connected.
At least she'll find to shadow somebody who does work around here.
That is very, that is very true. And because of what she did.
So you don't want to come up?
And what I have told her is never run for a public office. That is just something she doesn't want to do.
You want to come up here and give a few comments?
All right, any other public comments? If not, we'll be going to Mr. Slade.
Okay, this is, uh, essentially this is reconvening and the discussion we've already begun. We had already begun. We wanted to take a little bit of time, uh, just to make sure we knew what was going on. So I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Buster here to help me out with this. This goes back to the discussion from the prior board meeting where we discussed, uh, a new memo of understanding that MDOT has asked us to enter into with respect to bridge inspections. Uh, and so the, the discussion, uh, that we led you guys through was that DOT has, has ramped up considerably its bridge inspection protocol. They're seeking, uh, much more information about each bridge as it's inspected. And in the past, we've been able to, you know, accommodate their bridge inspection requirements with a, uh, through a process that let us keep our cost, our flat fee per bridge cost down. Uh, on average, it was running us about between 40 and 50,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
For all of our bridge inspection protocol. They have now, they are now taking, essentially taking it out of the hands of the county and they, uh, DOT wants to enter into contracts directly with bridge inspectors to provide the service. And their, uh, federal money, uh, will be utilized to pay for that service, contingent upon there being enough, if, uh, in fact, the federal money does not go far enough to cover all of the costs of the bridge inspection, which are estimated, by the way, to be essentially four to five times what they have been costing. Uh, expected to go down after the first year, but the, that first year is gonna be a pretty big number. If the federal money is sufficient to cover it, that'll cover it. County won't have any obligation with respect to the cost. But the contract would be between DOT and the, and the, and the vendor, the inspector providing the service. Uh, the second issue for us is that if the federal money is not sufficient and the way it would be paid for, any, uh, any overage of the cost would be paid for out of available state aid monies that would otherwise be available to Rankin County. Okay? That, that would be the backstop, the first backstop. If, worst case scenario, both the federal money is insufficient and the state aid pro rata share is insufficient, then the county, under the agreement with DOT, would be required to make up whatever was left. So there is some potential exposure for that, but it's, it's third in line, so to speak. So we, we wanted to make you aware of that. DOT and the MOU requires, or it gives the county the opportunity to tell DOT who it is that we prefer that they enter into a contract with. Mr. Buster has already provided that information to you. So what we need to do today is to get our minds around what they're asking us to do, understand the MOU, and if you're prepared, we need to go ahead and authorize the execution of it and get it back to DOT. And we're out of time.
Yes, the dead, excuse me, the deadline is the 6th.
Right.
We have to take some action and, and if I may add, it, uh, back when we discussed this before, uh, there was one question that you had asked me to follow up on with, excuse me, with state aid. And that was whether that was just, uh, you're talking about a one-year contract now, not a multi-year. Now, there'll be bridge inspections every year, so the others will come up later. But what you're dealing with now is just this first one. And, uh, we have to have some action. Matter of fact, I got a, I got a text yesterday from them wondering why I hadn't got this information back to them already because the 6th is the deadline.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to approve. Second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
All right, uh, the next item here is our, uh, a review of a final, of the final closeout requirements and action to authorize a final distribution related to the Old Fannin Road Improvement Project. You see that number there and the authority to issue the check in the amount of 18,833.33 to DOT.
That sounds like a compromise.
Yes. Um, so, so here's, uh, it's, it's actually, it's, it's actually not a compromise. Um, I, I want to be clear that, uh, and I, I'm, I'm saying this for myself, not for anyone else. Uh, do not agree with the methodology employed here to arrive at this figure. Uh, do not agree that there was anything, uh, that justifies an additional payment to DOT. But, uh, the, they have us proverbially over the barrel. Um, we've got multiple state aid or other DOT-related projects that are in the queue, that are waiting on go. Uh, and this continuing issue with Old Fannin has got all of that process hung up. So they are basically sitting there saying, you either come to us and pay this, or you don't get your other projects approved.
Are they saying they overpay this?
No, sir. They're saying, let me walk you through, uh, what, what this issue is. As Old Fannin Road is being constructed, there are processes in place. We are, Rankin County is the LPA. Okay, that's the, we are the local political subdivision that's responsible for the project. As the project is, is underway, there are testing requirements, there are inspections and other things that go as a part of that. Uh, the contractor hired a subcontractor to provide the asphalt installation services part of the contract. There were core samples that were taken as that was being completed. There were findings made by our inspectors that some of the core samples did not meet specifications and appropriate deductions were made as a result of those failed inspections. There were deductions made to what should be paid to the contractor and ultimately to the subcontractor for that work. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We, we penalized the subcontractor and the contractor for findings that we made that were deficient and we were using DOT's specifications and guise to determine what the penalty ought to be. Anything I said wrong yet?
You're okay.
They, they, uh, so we came up with a deduction and we made it. This project, uh, you need to put under the, under the, uh, under the guise of this. This is a federal project, okay? Federal money, 80%, 20% on us. This is a federal project. There are rules and regulations that are in place that say, hey, if it's a fed project, you can't, you can't put any retainage in that product, in that project. You can't, you can't rat hole a 10% number to keep it back just in case there's some error somewhere. So you got a pot to, to draw from and to get things right with the contractor. There's no retainage on this project. Anything I said wrong yet?
That's correct.
All right, good. So we have to pay it all out when there's a payout unless we find on the front end that there's something that is amiss, which we did in accordance with DOT's specifications. Their insiders, DOTs, gets to go back and revisit all of those calculations before they are willing to close out the project to make sure that we did it right. Okay? So as a part of the DOT relook and revisit, they decided we didn't penalize the subcontractor enough for those failures. That's what that number represents.
Yeah.
You should have penalized the subcontractor more than you did, even though you followed our guidelines. We think because we just want to, that you didn't penalize them enough. And so we're going to require you, Rankin County, to return to us some of the money that was paid that should not have been paid. That's what that represents.
Yeah, asphalt, excuse me, Greg, the asphalt that you paid for is out there. And it's performing well if anybody goes down. I mean, it's been out there three years, whatever how long, seemed like all my lifetime. But, uh, anyway, uh, everything has worked fine, but it gets down to a paper situation. And, uh, we made the recommendation on the deductions and, uh, based on what we've done for all these years, on state aid and everything else. But they came back with a different approach to do it. Uh, and I won't try to go into the particulars unless y'all want to try, want me?
No, that's good.
They changed the rules after the fact. They hold the cards. They're holding up our projects. We don't want the, our other projects to keep getting hung up. We would prefer to just resolve this and get it off the books. Let's be done with this. And let's don't talk about Old Fannin as a construction project anymore. We're just about to get to where we're gonna start talking about Old Fannin as an overlay.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carries.
Item C is an, is a, I'm sorry. Do I have permission to move? Item C is an action to authorize our road manager conduct some, uh, cover material maintenance, uh, out at the location of one of our ancient solid waste sites, Ebenezer Road, Sales Road, and you see the parcel number there. Uh, what's happened is this is one of our old dump sites and the material that was originally covered was not satisfactorily covered and it has resurfaced and we need to make sure we get it covered.
So you're going to get all the proper documentation in place with the gentleman and we're gonna use the material on their location?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
I make most approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. I have heartburn on this one. Uh, I wrote out, looked at it yesterday. Uh, it's just the unknown that bothers me. Once we, once we get our equipment on it and once we get our dirt on it, whatever's there is ours.
We're gonna have some documentation to work that out.
But is it, is it not likely ours?
Do you really think DMEPs don't care about documentation?
That's what I'm thinking right now. That if they, they would see it as our problem already.
They may do it. I mean, but at least we have some leg to stand on because we don't really know what was done 30 years ago. You know, we may have some out here, but once we do all this, we're agreeing that was all our problems to begin with and, and that dominoes should start falling. You got a house on one side, a house to be built.
At this point, at this point, I think you'd best approve this and then we'll look into some of those things, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll.
I just want to make sure that, like, you know, uh, the work we're doing now, that the landowner is not gonna come back on us 10, 15 years.
Let's do it like this. I'll let, Mr. Slade, you report back through the discussion with the landowner before we actually let.
That's what I'm asking. It's just a prudent, newer move.
Yeah. All right. I'll, I'm good to move forward. All in favor say aye. All, I assume by four a's out there? All opposed like aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, what I will, what I will suggest is that my intention is for this to be, uh, a, a revisiting of a matter that will be closed out as a result of this work. And we will have documentation that the matter is resolved satisfactorily and is released and that there's no continuing obligation.
All right.
That's my intention.
Right.
Ms. Oster.
We have the review of our agendas for Monday's meeting, August the 6th. If y'all have any questions on any of that. If you'll notice, we do have, um, an afternoon budget meeting session next Monday to go over in detail some more of our.
Will we be able to start that in the morning if it turns out for whatever bizarre reason we end early?
Yes, we will be. We will be able to, yes. And we do have a couple of corrections on, on consent, um, on a budget amendment. Other than that, everything is as you see it.
Additional business? Are there any questions on agenda? I'm sorry, are there any questions on agenda?
I'd like to have a motion of requiring the engineer to clean up whatever is.
Clean up the carpet.
Yes.
Charge it to engineering.
I want the engineer cleaning the carpet. You're a trustee.
Come on, you think, you think ain't qualified?
You have to do a study and. Do a chemical check and all that.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're ready.
Well, that, wait a second. I'll say, Mr. Gaines, Mr. Morrison's here reviewing agendas.
Oh, I'm just flipping through. I'm good.
You good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I might ask a question about something on consent.
Okay.
Next meeting, but I'll maybe have cleared up before that.
All right, Ms. Oster, I think we're, we're good. They're going on to additional business.
Okay, we have a discussion of a potential action of the relocation of AT&amp;T for the new county's unit maintenance facility. I believe Greg's gonna take that.
I can.
Or Mike.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be a bad thing. Uh, what we have is, I'm not really sure. Mike, you may have to help me in describing exactly what that is. It's a, uh, it is a main major, uh, utility service line that we understand runs from Atlanta to Dallas and it bisects our property where the new maintenance facility will go. Uh, we've been in discussions, um, at, at, at some level with AT&amp;T at this point.
We didn't cut it, oh.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Woo, that would be bad.
Now, the, the issue with Old Fannin and what we're paying for that little bit of fund, uh, would get you about 15 seconds of downtime if you slice this particular line. Over a hundred thousand dollars a minute. If you cut it. So there's a lot of information flowing through there. Uh, it's, uh, at the time that it was installed on the site, it was installed probably at an appropriate depth for what was going on out there, which is a bunch of hunting and nothing else. Uh, but it's, it's definitely gonna be in the way, uh, at this point with respect to some of the activity that we're planning for the site. And so I've been in some preliminary discussions with AT&amp;T that, and to get it moved, uh, there, there will be a cost associated with that. So we wanted to make you aware of that. Uh, Mike, you're gonna have to help me with the numbers on it and also with the methodology, how we're gonna do that.
Well, I mean, basically, they got a contractor gonna come out there. cheapest way was to lower this cable than trying to splice some board and cut it over and do all that. So I think we're, any of that? And that's just, that's not the seed number, Jake, or anybody?
I'm assuming you're saying 100, not 1,000, right?
Yeah.
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five thousand. I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. Oh, so, but that's not to seed.
They're gonna just lower it and we're gonna put wood on top of it.
We can't put nothing over it to be the parking lot and stuff like that. What it is.
We're not, we're not, a building's not going on top of it.
No, we can't build on it. But what it is, a big old ridge that comes across right at the end, the, end of the road right there. And this cable is in the top of that thing. I mean, we've been looking at this ever since we looked at the project. Any other site you go on, you're gonna have to lower this cable 'cause it's not for two foot, five inches deep.
Did they pay for it to go there?
Yes, sir. AT&amp;T put it in.
And we really didn't find the site.
They buy the right one.
It is dedicated, white of way.
But I mean, this thing was probably put in in the 70s, maybe. You know, it's, it's old. But, uh.
Just ask Frank at first to do it.
But I mean, we, even on the other site that we was looking at, we was gonna have to lower this cable because the dirt that's there is just a big old, it just come across a big old sharp hill right there. And everything's 15 foot below it on both sides. So you got to do something to get in the property.
That's crazy. I had to say we drive over it.
There's, there's some.
Just leave it, leave a hill.
There's, there's some more, um, some more thoughts about, uh, what the future may hold and other development activities out there. And we'll keep good records on this. That's really all I'm willing to say at this point. We'll keep good records on what it costs to do this. Um, that's really all I'm willing to say at this point, we'll keep good records on what it costs us to do this, 'cause I, I think there will be some activity out there at some point in the future where, uh, we, we may want some, at, at worst, we may want some credit for what we've done here. Um, and possibly we may ask for some reimbursement for what we've done here as a part of a, of a different project.
And we're working on that right now, but this is a total different, I know, you say AT&amp;T, but the people we deal with every day don't deal with these people, you know? It's a different, total different wheel, huh? It's our transmission folks, so.
They're pretty particular about this particular mine.
Yeah.
I guess so.
They may not be about, they may be about that one, but they're dang sure not about the one that runs my house.
That's right. That's right.
For a quarter of a mile that lays on top of the ground.
That's right. Or the water line that lies next to it. They're not too concerned about that.
He's not a leak. But really, to make the site work like it's supposed to be, this, this really needs to be lowered.
I don't see I have much choice.
Other than leave a hill.
Make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by myself to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
So what you've done is you've authorized, uh, Ms. Lawrence, can't administer it. I'll, I'll look over any agreement, obviously, that is, uh, that comes about, just make sure we're comfortable with it. Uh, and if the, if the change in the cost is, uh, is out there, we'll come back and let you guys know. I don't expect it to be, I expect that to be a firm number.
Ms. Oster, any additional business?
No, sir.
Any additional gentleman? Is there a need for executive session?
Was this person supposed to be here?
No, please.
My agenda has Wagner Engineering.
No. I'm sorry, I didn't take that out of my computer. I took it out of the phone line.
All right, okay.
He's not coming. He's not doing another day. He's gonna let me.
Uh, anything else? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn until Monday, August the sixth. Most of them sound.
Second.
No, come on, don't second it. Second, you can drag it out.
Second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Y'all, is everybody saying?
This is the time.
The, 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 the.